The October 25th, year of our Lord, 2011, 7:00 PM. Welcome one and all. As we start, as usual, I'd like to please ask everybody to rise for an invocation and a place of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Oh heavenly Father, we thank you that you give us this wonderful city and all the employees that work so tirelessly to make it the beautiful and loving community that it is. Continue to watch over the citizens of this island because in each way, they're very special. We thank you for blessing us with this beautiful fall season and having cared for us during this past hurricane season. We also pray for Linda and her family in her time of loss. For it is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Verwork.
Here.
Councilmember Vitelli. This is downtown. Councilmember Buchanan.
Right.
Councilmember Duffy.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
Here.
Councilmember Peeny.
He's on medical leave.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas. Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Assistant Tucker. I'm sorry, Assistant Jupiter. I have right. And Attorney Halperson.
Well, thank you. Welcome one and all. Obviously, you can see that Linda's not at my left hand here. She's had a death in her family. Al's mother passed away yesterday. She's tending to the family. The arrangements for those who would like to know will be, there'll be a service tomorrow at 3:00 o'clock at the Methodist Church here on the island. And everybody's welcome. If you want to pay your respects to the family, please do so. Okay, thank you. Moving on, I have the pleasure of swearing in a new employee. We have Randall Wan Coop with us. May I have a motion to accept him as an employee?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Randall, can I see you up front here? I know. This is really one of the more exciting things you have to do, I know. Stand over here with, I've done this before.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll do it again.
He goes M. Twigs, please.
Okay. You know the Bible? Raise your right. I, Randall Wan Coop.
I, Randall Wan Coop.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances.
According to the ordinances.
Of the City of Isle of Palms.
City of Isle of Palms.
To perform the duties of the position.
Perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
With the best of my abilities.
With the best of my abilities.
Discharge of duties thereof.
Discharge of duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
You're here. Randall comes to us from New York, where he was a patrol officer for Montgomery Police Department. Where's my family?
Upstate, about a couple hours from the United States.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, you'll enjoy our winter.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving on. Let's have the reading of the Journal of Previous Meetings. We have a regular meeting of September 27th. Minutes in your packet. Have a motion to approve or amend?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Not heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. For now, in the period of citizens' comments, we have one in particular, but I'll open the floor up for any other citizen that wants to speak now before we introduce our auditors who are just chomping at the bit out here to spellbind us here. Anybody else would like to address council? This is your time.
Sarah Finkelstein.
Excuse me. Please go over here, identify your name, your name and address, so Murray gets you on the record.
I'm pretty loud without it. Sarah Finkelstein, 54th Avenue. And I had a problem after the work was done for the drainage system down in our area that we were unhappy with the way the, the street, our street looked afterwards. And I called and came to the Isle of Palms and to the council, some of the councilor members, and also to Emily, and complained about the way that our street looked. And so, they have taken care of it very well, and I'm very pleased with it, and I thank you so much.
Well, thanks for coming. We appreciate that. We hope all of our actions have similar results. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Let's move on. We do have our auditors with us. David Phillips is with us, and Gina Carnegie is here. They're with Green, Finney, and Horton. They have been our auditors for a number of years, and they're now going to present us with our annual audit results. And as you can see, we have a video displaying, I think, what, about an hour and a half? Okay. So, David, the floor is yours.
You all are welcome to turn your chairs to the screen.
If you can't see, you know, we're very informal. Thank you. You can sit up here if you really want to take a note.
As you know, we have just kind of wrapped up the audit a few weeks ago. We still have some small changes to be made to the final financial statements, so you don't have one of those in your packets yet, but you'll get that in the next couple of weeks. But we wanted to go ahead and provide you a quick overview of the financial, you know, results for this past year, so that, you know, you'd be kind of aware of what's transpired. At the end of the presentation, just to let you know, Debbie's going to hand out a copy of the PowerPoint. We didn't want that to distract anybody. We wanted, this is a little bit bigger too, you'll be able to see it a little bit better. And also, a copy of another report, so that you can peruse that at your leisure. Okay. Let's look at your, some highlights. Your year-end financial condition is very good. The fund balance for the general fund increased about $111,000. Now, that's after the transfer you made into the Capital Projects Fund for $571,000. The city's net assets increased by approximately 1.3 million, and I guess the best thing of all, from an auditor perspective, is that you got an unqualified opinion. And we'll look at that in a second, what that exactly means. Again, we always like to remind everybody that the financial statements are the responsibility of the city. They're not our financial statements, and, you know, our responsibility is to issue an independent opinion on that. The unqualified term is, you know, again, a strange term, but that's the best opinion you can get. And again, what that means is, is that we're not aware of anything that was materially wrong. If it was a qualified opinion, we'd say, "Everything looks good except for something." You don't want one of those. So again, you got the best opinion from an accounting auditing term that you can get. You know, again, we give you reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct, but we don't give you absolute assurance. The only way we could give you absolute assurance is if we looked at every single transaction that occurred during the year, and that would be totally cost preventative. And so, we do a lot of sampling methodologies, like they do in polling data and so forth. We take samples of significant transactions, you know, various transaction classes, and when we look at those samples, and if we don't see that there's any errors occurring in the sample that we look at, we can extrapolate that to the remaining population. I wanted to talk a little bit about fraud. I don't do this very often. And it's not that there is any fraud, okay? But about every five years, we like to kind of broach that subject again, because there's this big expectation gap. Everybody thinks that the auditors, that's their job, is to catch fraud. But what's interesting, if you look at that second point there, we only give you reasonable assurance, that means that we should only find it if it's material. And it still won't be absolutely perfect, because we're not going to look at every single transaction. It could be tons of the ones that we didn't look at, where the fraud occurred. And so, we wanted to show you some highlights on where fraud or how fraud is generally found. Tips. Most of those are from employees, management, or council. Something they hear, something maybe on the street. You know, Billy's got a nice new car. How did Billy afford that? And that creates some questions, that ends up being drilled down to. Management review. You know, we always harp on the importance of management review and the board reviewing the financial results, because you know what? You'd be amazed, if someone knows that someone's going to be looking at something, there's a lot less likelihood someone's going to roll the dice and try to do something fraudulent. Internal controls are real big. We really harp on that as a firm, and sometimes people get mad at us, because we just think that's so important, because there's thousands of transactions going on. And if there're not good controls in place where someone is preparing something, someone is reviewing and signing off, there's more risk. There's more risk something could happen. What's interesting, look down there where the external auditor is. You would have thought, most people would have put them at number one, but we're at 5% of the likelihoodness that we'll catch the fraud. Almost everything really comes from another source. So again, I just wanted to make you aware of that, and I want to talk a little bit about fraud. These three items have to take place for fraud to occur. There has to be an incentive or pressure by someone to want to do it. Maybe there's a whole bunch of medical bills. Maybe someone has, someone's lost a job in the family, and they're really struggling. I'm going to skip the middle one, we're going to go down to the bottom one. There has to be a rationalization and attitude. Well, you know, they haven't given me a raise in a couple of years. I'm due this. This is not fair. That could be, has to be present too. The only one that you can control is the opportunity. You can make the opportunity so difficult, or so, where it's in small amounts of money, so that you don't take much risk. So you want to reduce that opportunity. You want to create those controls. You want to create the management reviews. So you know what? The opportunity's just not there. Someone's not going to want to take that risk. So again, I just want to reiterate a little bit on fraud. These are just a couple brief slides on the topic, but this is also the reason why we harp on controls. Controls are so important. It's so important that you stay engaged and involved in looking at the financial information that's presented to you. Okay, now let's look at the thing that I think most of you care about the most, is the fund balance of the general fund. You know, despite a tough economy, you had an increase in fund balance of about $111,000. Remember, that's after that transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. GASB 54, it was a new accounting principle came into effect this year, and it made you eliminate your disaster recovery fund and your beach maintenance fund. It won't allow those to be separate funds anymore, and those resources have been moved into the general fund. This is a new requirement. They're the, GASB is the god of accounting, and you don't really have much say-so against them, and so this is something that we had to do. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more on slides 18 to 19. You had total fund balance of 4.59 million, which is about 58% of your 2011 fiscal year expenditures. Remember, you implemented a fund balance policy that you wanted to keep around 30%, at least 30%. So you're really good in relationship to your policy there. You also have about 2.25 million that is unassigned. Unassigned means there's no constraints. There's no pledging, there's no specifications on those funds. Remember, you actually implemented a fund balance policy that said, "Hey, we want to keep unassigned at least at 20%." So you're doing really well in light of your targets that you set as a council. Again, the city has met the GFOA's most recent recommendations of keeping at least two months of operating expenditures, and that would be about 16%. So you can see, you're really in good shape as it relates to that. Again, you have a healthy fund balance at June 30th. Okay, why is it important to have a good fund balance? Remember your tax cycle? When all your real property taxes come in? Pretty much December, January, February. And then you don't collect a lot for another nine or 10 months. So you have to build up some cushion to carry you through the leaner months. It helps your credit score. You know, if you want to go out and issue some debt down the road, if that's a need, it's going to really help you to be able to get better rates on your debt. Emergencies and revenue shortfalls. You know, we've been in a pretty tough economy. You've been able to ride that toughness a lot better than some, because you had a good fund balance. It helps you to save for major planned expenditures. Maybe down the road, you want to build a new fire station or something. What's nice to have the, I'm sorry. Wrong topic. Let me think of another one. But you know, it gives you options. You might say, "You know what? We'll pay half of it, we'll finance the other half." It gives you flexibility. Okay. Okay, let's look at your general fund revenues. They were pretty much flat, and that's what we're seeing kind of across the board on a lot of our governments. They haven't changed a lot from the prior year. Some of your, you know, hospitality, tourism money, and some of the other funds did see a little bit of an increase, and we see that taking place more in, I would say, urban areas. A lot of the rural areas, we're not seeing much improvement at all on the hospitality. But that's in a different fund, but I just kind of mentioned that on the side. So again, the revenues were flat. Your expenditures, remember, they went up $192,000. We list some of the functions where they increased, but remember, a lot of that was because of the salary and benefit merit stabilization that y'all did this past year, and just fuel costs. I mean, most of those fuel costs were up 25 to 50% over the prior year, and you have a lot of vehicles that are on the road. We're going to now look through the various other funds. Your Capital Projects Fund, just kind of a recap, you spent about $638,000 on the drainage project this year. You also spent about $214,000 on the completion of your city hall renovations, and about $167,000 on the new fire, oh, excuse me, I'm getting stuck on the fire truck, the new garbage truck. You still have a fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund of about 2.7 million, and again, some of the projects you're looking at down the road are some recreational center improvements, drainage improvements, and the dredging project and other capital needs. So again, what's nice about being able to put money over into your capital project, it helps you meet some of these ongoing needs. A lot of people don't have the ability to make a transfer to their Capital Projects Fund of over half a million dollars. That's a nice ability to be able to save that money away and use it for these projects when they come due. We're going to briefly look at some of your tourism-related revenues, your accommodation funds. You had a fund balance there of approximately $2 million. The revenues came in a good bit higher, by about $361,000. A lot of that came from Charleston County, and we don't necessarily always have a good answer why that spiked up. I think if we look at it, last year, it was lower, and we think they held back some, and they kind of made it up this year. Your hospitality tax fund, it increased about $39,000, and you have a fund balance at the end of the year, about $458,000. Now remember, those revenues are all restricted. They can only be used for tourism-related activities, so they can't just be used for just anything. Beach restoration fund. Most of you are very familiar with a lot of the cost and the money that was raised to deal with what took place a few years ago, and still some of it's ongoing. We got some history to let you see how much money was collected over, over some time. This year, we spent, and we had revenue of about $135,000 we recognized, and we spent this year, on additional beach restoration projects. At the end of the year, you still had about 1.1 million still available to deal with the issues related to that. Your Marina Enterprise Fund, you have about 4.4 million in net assets. Most of that is in capital assets. It's the property and plant and equipment related to the marina. And so, 3.2 million of the 4.4 million in net assets is really real property. It's not necessarily something liquid that you could sell. 1.2 million is unrestricted net assets, which is generally, you know, cash, receivables, short-term, you know, assets. Again, you have 1.2 million in cash and investments in the enterprise fund, and you're bringing in about lease income of about $400,000 from the various leasing activities that you have at the marina. You know, about four, five, six years ago, it's starting to, my mind fazed, because it's been, been so wild. GASB issued a new pronouncement where they wanted you to provide in the financial statements, some, a set of financial statements that were like corporate America, that were on the same basis of accounting. They wanted to include a management's discussion analysis, which is very similarly to publicly traded companies. They, in their 10 Qs and their 10 Ks, they have to have an M-DNA, a management's discussion analysis. When you get your final report and you look at the one from the prior year, there's a management's discussion analysis in there that kind of summarizes in very brief terms what took place in the past year. There's some new budgetary comparison schedules, and again, the last point there is, the purpose is to show the financial condition and activity of the city as a whole. It wants you to add all of your assets, all of your liabilities, so you can kind of come up with what the net worth of the city is. The bad connotation of that, it makes you think like you could sell yourself, you know, whereas a private business, that's, you want to know what the net worth is, but you know, that doesn't come into play near as much on a municipality. So on those financial statements, you had total assets of 39.4 million, and that's, you go, "Wow, that's a lot of assets." But look where most of it is. 65% of that is in capital assets. That's this building. That's your fire trucks. That's your new public safety building and so forth. 30% is in cash and investments, and around 5% is really receivables and other miscellaneous assets. You have total liabilities. So remember, when you built buildings, when you buy a truck, sometimes you have to finance that through debt. Well, your debt is 18.6 million, of which 87% of that is in debt. So your liabilities, you know, are coming, are really in that area, but you do have a little bit in unearned revenue, and 6% in other accrued liabilities. That's mainly AP and payroll accruals. So net assets is your assets minus your liabilities. It's kind of like the net equity in your home, if you took the fair market value of the house, minus the mortgage. This is my net equity in my home. Or the net assets of the city is saying it's about $20.8 million. You had total revenues on these government-wide statements of about 11.8 million, and total expenses of about 10.5. Other things just to keep in mind that took place this past year. Remember, the city entered into a municipal capital lease of approximately $166,000 to purchase a garbage truck. And remember, you paid that right off this year in July, 2011. So you, you entered into it back, I think it was in August of 2010, it's already paid off. So that's gone. The city entered into a contract, you know, back in 2009, for some beach monitoring. I just wanted to keep you aware of that commitment that's out there. The city also entered into a five-year contract in July with a vendor for, you know, some ditch maintenance, and that was for approximately $438,000. Some changes that took place effective after year-end. Remember, the state, I think it's SCLGAG, know what that means? I couldn't probably say it right now. But that was your old health insurance plan. Well, they discontinued that plan, the municipal association has. So you've had to switch your health insurance plan. That became effective July 1st. In addition, we noted again, at the very bottom, the fact that you paid off the capital lease, the lease purchase on that garbage truck. This is, of course, everybody's favorite slide, it's on all the new auditing standards. The only thing I want to just emphasize from this is just mainly, they want your auditors to have more dialogue with you. That's why a lot, at the very beginning, you see a letter that we send out, I think goes in your mail patch, and it says, "Hey, the audits begin. If you have any questions, please talk to us." Usually, we sit down with the mayor and, you know, other council members, and say, "Hey, is there anything that you're concerned about that we should be aware of before we start the audit?" And then at the end of the audit, before we even meet with you, we sit back with them and go over it all, just to make sure, are there any concerns? We want to, want you to be able to have the ability to ask questions, and you're all welcome at any time to call us, email us, ask us questions, because we want to be available in that regard. There've been some recent accounting principle changes. Again, that's the GASB, which is the god of accounting. They have made some big changes on retiree medical plans. And yours right now, you require that retirees pay the age-appropriate premium for that coverage. And because of that requirement, you don't have an OPEB liability. An OPEB means other post-employment billing, roughly a retiree medical liability. If at any point in time, you choose to subsidize any part of what the retiree would have to pay normally, then you're going to end up having to account for, and a liability that we would have to get an actuary to account for. So I just wanted to let you be aware of that. Right now, you don't have any issues, but that's a big issue, as you're seeing in the state right now. OPEB and pensions. Boy, those are hitting the papers, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. GASB 54 became applicable this year, and GASB felt like the old terminology of reserved and unreserved wasn't clear enough. And they thought five terms would make it more clear. And so, they created the categories non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And if you remember, I think back in June, council literally made a resolution to commit some resources for various disaster recovery and other projects. And I think one was a recreational ball field, was that right? I guess, I think I got that right. So we're going to look at that briefly. So what it has done, I know this is hard to see, and you'll get this in your PowerPoint, so my apologies, I know it, you notice there's a lot of categories on the left now. You know, and what it tries to do is say, on each of these categories, we have restricted money, and you know what? A whole bunch of this accommodation and hospitality taxes is restricted for tourism-related activities, and it's trying to help identify better for you what the restrictions are, what the commitment's for. So in some ways, I think it expands your financial statements in that area, but you know more what that money's for. You can really see by the description, hey, that's what that money's for. And it helps you maybe as a council, helps management, maybe keep it a little bit more on the radar of always seeing, you know, how much have we put aside for this purpose and so forth. So again, it's going to be debatable, how great this is, but this is what it is. We don't have much say-so with the GASB on getting them to change that. Okay. Just wanted to mention a couple new developments. Pension accounting is going to be the real hot button. The GASB right now, again, the god of accounting, has issued a preliminary opinion that anybody that's in the state plan, you know, the South Carolina retirement system, you have a lot of people in the state plan, and the PR, SCRS and the PRS plan, even if you're just paying a contractual rate, you just kind of pay a premium, and that's all you have to do, they're saying that those type of call-sharing plans, if, if the overall state plan is over or underfunded, if it's underfunded, you're going to have to record your liability, your portion of that liability on your financial statements. And this is about two years away, but I don't think they're going to change their opinion. So what they're saying is, if the state plan was overfunded, you get to record an asset on your financial statements. Because what they're saying is, ultimately, the South Carolina plan is not going to come up with some free money to pay for the underfundedness. If it's underfunded, guess who they're going to come back to? Every participating employer. And we're going to raise your rates, or we're going to have to do something to make up the shortfall. So this is a real big debatable topic. You know, you hear all the news right now about how the plan is underfunded at the state level, that's even before taking this into account. And in the pension accounting right now, they're actually changing the assumptions, and it's going to make that liability even higher. They're lowering the amortization figure. They're, they're saying you can't be as aggressive on your interest rate assumption, or your market rate that you're going to earn on those funds. So what's going to end up happening when all this kicks in, if it doesn't get changed, is that liability on the state level is going to go way up, and then everybody that's participating in that plan will have to record an asset or liability, it'll be a liability right now that's your pro-rata piece. And it's to create awareness. There's this issue. There's a coming funding that's going to need to take place, and they're expecting you, the participating employers, to pay that down the road. Again, one reminder, if you ever get a lot of federal money, there's always strings attached. They always want it to be audited. And they want to make sure, again, if you get federal money, if you get over $500,000, we have to do what's called a single audit. And we have to make sure you're complying with the terms of the grant. So just to let you know, that doesn't happen to y'all very often. Usually, if it happens, it's a bad thing, it's a FEMA. Some storm has come through. One other point we want to mention, we have a management letter, we'll hand that out too. There was just one comment, it was roughly the same comment that we've had for the last couple of years. Linda and them have made a lot of progress on putting together a policy and procedures manual and so forth, and just to continue to work on that. The biggest fear that we see a lot of times in organization, there's no succession planning. What happens if something, someone leaves? Does someone else know how to complete their job? Are there policies and procedures in place that someone else could jump in and, and receive Are there policies and procedures in place that someone else could jump in and receive business license money or whatever it is? So again, they've made great progress, but that is still there, and, you know, we wanted, and I think in council wanted us just to keep that on the radar, so that everybody knows that's something that they're working towards. No, it went fast. I try not to be quite as energetic as usual. Any questions?
Well, I have a few. I'll just work backwards. Your policies and procedures, you know, the staff is working on that. We've always asked you, last series of years, is there a template out there we could copy? You've always said no. The one thing I want, when we finish, we don't want to use ours as a template and sell it to others.
It'd be hard, as soon as you hear you have one.
Wait a second, Mr. Mayor. Unless we have the licensing in place.
You know, unless it's due process.
Right. Unless you get some reciprocality.
And you know, the staff has worked hard on putting that together. So we're all pleased, and I know there's progress to be made yet ahead. But pension accounting, obviously, it's a big problem in the state, in probably 50 states and a few other districts. But this was done in the private sector a number of years ago. Record it's a non-cash.
Right. Well, the good thing is this will hit most likely those government-wide statements. So it won't hit your fund level, your general fund statements, but it's over there where you would do your long-term obligations, your debt and your assets. It gets put over there to let people know, it's coming. It's a long-term payment stream, but it's going to have to be paid one day. And it's not like you can exit the plan. I'm not aware of you being able to get out of the plan. So there's going to have to be some tough decisions made. Okay, are retirees are paying more? Are they going to cut the provisions of the plan? Are they gonna, you know, what are they going to have to do to lower that cost to make it sustainable?
Well, we're all in the boat. Questions, are we bailing or rowing? I don't know. I'm pleased that all of our general fund increased, our capital projects fund increased by the transfer of 500 and some thousand. Our tourism-related funds were way up. Where our fund balance is within about $30,000, $40,000, and we're at our all-time high.
I mean, how many people could say that in a time like this?
I know. And you see others, if you travel the state, et cetera. So I'm pleased that we've been able to hold it together and stay as liquid as we have.
And some people might, you know, say, whoa, why are you putting all this money in capital projects? But I tell you, that is so wise to be putting that money aside for these type of things that happen down the street all the time. And a lot of people don't have that rainy day fund. They don't have a fund to deal with an emergency. You have at least some capacity to do so, and that's nice.
Well, even then, the tourism-related funds, I've checked around the state. We're one of the, you may know better than I, but at least I've checked with maybe a dozen communities. They don't maintain a balance in their tourism-related funds, certainly not to the level.
Yeah, they're usually tapping them pretty fast.
They're either zero or looking at zero from where they are. So to be sitting here with about $2.6 million in our tourism-related funds, to me, that's disaster recovery or any other sudden occurrence opportunity for us, because we have no direct need for that funding at this moment. So let me see if there's other questions here. Questions to my left?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think it's important that council recognizes city staff. I think Debbie and Linda and the rest of the department heads have done a remarkable job in this last year, and obviously, we're seeing some excellent results from that. So as a member of council, I think we ought to reach out and thank them for their hard efforts.
Well, I concur. I was going to say, if we could applaud, do it. That's a very wise comment.
Let me reiterate that, because I did, usually I'll say something to that effect. I mean, this is one of the jobs we just love to be on, because they really know what they're doing. They're on top of it. A lot of times, when you go to some little municipalities, and we do a lot of them, it's a struggle. You know, just getting good information. I tell you, they're really, really providing you very meaningful information. A lot of places don't even get financial reports on a regular basis, the councils, and they think that's normal. So, you know, just to let you know, you've got a lot to be thankful for, because you've really got people, you know, that are really presenting you good information, and you're being able to make wise decisions, because you have good information. Some people are making some bad decisions, but they didn't have good information in the first place. So.
And the only other comment is, to answer your question about why the county came forward, is because we done them. More money, because.
Why do you want to say how you hit them a couple?
We think we beat them up. I may argue otherwise, but they did come forward and return money to us that we thought were ours in the first place. So thank you. So Debbie's now going to give you midnight reading material. Okay. Any other questions? Nothing else for David Virginia? You've spent the night with us and many mornings, I know. We appreciate your time, and you allow Debbie to get on with her work while she's reading you all that stuff also. You never miss a beat. Thank you much. We better save one for Linda, or else she'll go on.
She could probably recite it in her sleep.
Well, she wants the official version. I mean, there's one thing to see, hear, and we had a discussion with David before, but not the final version. Okay, I'll move on with our agenda. No other citizens' comments, reports from standing committees. Have a good night. Hope you get home. Drive safe.
Thank you all.
First report is, I'll give the Ways and Means Committee report. We met on Tuesday, the 18th at 5:45. And we've got a report from our treasurer, not unlike what you've heard earlier. Our general fund revenues currently at 11%, which is exactly where they were last year. So that's not a surprise. Our general fund expenditures are running at 21% of budget, whereas after three months, our target would have been 25%. So we're running below budget on our general fund by that amount. So that's all well and good. The only operation, only department, if you will, that's over budget, happens to be a beach service officers, which we break out separately, but we don't use them in the winter, late fall, winter, early spring. So that budget will quickly be brought back into line without much to do. Our tourism-related funds, we received $99,000 in our municipal accommodations tax, which was 14% ahead of last year. Our hospitality tax is running behind schedule, but we hope some taxpayers that are delinquent at present, and so that will be brought into line hopefully as they get caught up. And we've received nothing from the state. That's a quarterly payment, and the county's actions is on a half-year basis. So I'll move into projects. We did discuss the beach restoration projects and the funds on hand. We still have $900,000, $some thousand available to us, and we are proceeding on with our engineering work and the fact that we have received the OCRMs permit to do the realignment on the beach, moving sand from where it's surplus to where it's needed. Whoops. We did finish on 53rd to 57th Avenue. ED's submitted their eighth payment. We have some monies remaining on that project, but those funds were going to apply to the county and the transportation organization to see if we can continue, amend the project to increase the scope or do whatever is necessary, so we can hang on to that, those funds and continue working to improve the drainage in the areas along the avenues from 42nd all the, now that we've finished 53rd, we have 42nd to 52nd left in front of us. So still quite a bit of work to do. City Hall renovation, not much work going on financially. From a new business standpoint, I'll bring forward the fact that the Public Works Committee recommended that we award a contract to John's Ford for the purchase of an F-150, an amount of $28,443. This is under state contract pricing. I'll make that in the form of a motion now.
I'll second.
Motion and second. This is the truck we use for our pickup service. I don't know what you want to call it, quick pickup or whatever.
Shuttle.
Shuttle service. Okay. I never get that right. So any discussion?
Yep. I'd just like to point out that this truck is 10 years old and has been ridden hard.
Okay. Ready to see pasture.
Yes.
No further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Recommendation then was received from our accommodations tax committee. The accommodations tax committee made a motion, which I'll make here, to approve $15,000 for 2012 Spoleto Festival. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded. This is a continuing commitment on our part for the Spoleto. This is the same funding that we've used for the last series of years. Any further discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. From the accommodation tax committee, we received and approved $15,000 for the Patriots' Point Naval Maritime Museum Foundation for a study they wish to conduct. I'm going to ask that we defer action on this, because I've yet been able to talk to Mac Perdett, who runs the maritime enterprise down there. And I would like to, with your concurrence, I'd like to defer this for a month until I can get with Mac to make sure he's in full support, so.
So moved.
Second.
Make that as a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that point? Okay. All in favor of deferring? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I know we had something else. Again, from Public Safety Committee, award of, to, turned on. I probably didn't pronounce it right. Turned on Chevrolet, an amount of $15,871, to a free-budgeted Chevrolet Impala's. This is under our state contract pricing for police vehicles. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Motion carries. And last, this is to approve up to $9,000. It's an unbudgeted expense for the installation of Metro E data line and the purchase of a Cisco router, firewall and programming changes for the records management system. And this is all associated with our consolidated dispatch in preparation for that, which is now slated for 2013, if I'm not mistaken. But if we get organized, we can start communicating better and quicker. This is unanticipated, but something we're going to proceed on, so. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We concluded, I'm looking my notes here. I guess we concluded to have a meeting on November 15th at 5:45. This will be a date that's, the same date will follow our Ways and Means meeting with our council meeting, so we don't interfere with your celebration of Thanksgiving, or staff's celebration of Thanksgiving. So make sure your calendar is duly noted, so. I'll make that as a report. Any questions? None heard? Moving on. Let's go to public safety. Party is absent. Can I turn to you, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Public safety met on October 8th at 5:30 PM. All members of the committee were present. On new business, it was discussed about a, Diana Turk has come up with a idea to help residents, and that was creating a medical equipment loan closet. And as Public Safety has moved forward with that, there's some other paperwork as far as procedures to be put together, but we expect this to be up and running. The plan is to announce in the Eye and Eye a request for donations, so hold on to your wheelchairs and crutches and other areas that could help share with residents that would be in need with that. Just as far, we did talk about the upgrade as far as consolidated dishwash with the upgrade, and we voted on that accordingly. And just a side note, as far as the three vehicles, all cars that were replaced for the, the police cars replaced in the Ways and Means, all vehicles had over 100,000 miles in six years within, which is in the plan that we follow replacing capital equipment. Okay. On the police department, there were four incidents of thefts inside vehicles where the vehicles were not secured. So even though, you know, our police department does a fabulous job, it's real important to look out for your own personal goods and keep those cars locked and keep the bad guys at bay. We had 3,913 dispatch calls. Out of that, 2,997, almost 3,000 went to the police department. Discussion was held on off-season parking on Front Beach, and the committee has asked Chief of Accounting to come back with some recommendation. Part of the challenge is, some of the, you know, tourist locations are using the front beach parking, which is really hurting our businesses. So we need to find a better way to manage that and keep that in line. Next meeting for the public safety is 5:30 on Thursday, November 10th.
Very good. Any questions for public safety? None heard. Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, October 4th, at 4:00 PM. Had no citizens' comments this time. Everything is going well inside the department. Our expenses remain under budget, and our garbage collection for last month was up from last year, but we're still trending down, so that's a good thing. We had a discussion regarding trash, actually, the lawn debris. We still have residents that are putting it in plastic bags, even though our ordinances actually call for it, for paper, and Director Pitts is handling those situations on an individual basis with regards to notifying the owners of the properties for, and letting them know that we are going forward with the paper bags for our trash, I mean, our lawn debris. Okay. Other than that, we, under old business, we also, excuse me, discussed single-stream recycling, and as a committee, reviewed what the county's goals are, which is to have 40% of the total garbage to be recycling. And single-stream will allow the residents to put all their recyclables in one can and not have to worry about separating out the paper from the plastic from the cans. And they will provide a 95-gallon can to do that and pick it up for us. So if we can get on there, we did make a motion last month, and hopefully, we've been moved a notch up in their priority for getting on single-stream. Under old business, we had an update on the drainage project and discussed our stain on 54th. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if it would be appropriate at this time, but could we potentially move item number eight up to this moment? For the petition regarding the status of referral, the petition from the residents along 54th Avenue?
Okay. I don't, we can make a motion, or you can just talk about it.
I can talk about it and.
We're going to close the petition as a result of the actions taken by Public Works Organization and the feedback from the citizens there. Good work.
Yes. So, well, I guess we just talked about it. We can move forward on that. Under new business, we had a discussion, we had a request from a resident along Palm Boulevard for placing trash barrels on the non-ocean side of that. We had Mr. Shup from the, who actually handles our beach trash pickup, discuss what he picks up off of the beach access points. And he indicated that there really is not a lot of trash that he picks up at the beach access points on the ocean side of Palm Boulevard, and that placing any barrels on the non-ocean side of Palm Boulevard would be excessive from his perspective. The committee recommended that we offer that particular homeowner, you know, additional trash cans in order to place any trash that they seem to be picking up in their area. We also mentioned that during our highway cleanups, outside of cigarette butts, there's not a lot that we actually find along Palm Boulevard from a trash perspective, so that's pretty much how we handled that one. Other than that, we've already discussed the truck that's been approved and moved forward. And our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 2nd at 3:00 PM.
Very good. Thank you very much. The rect committee had no meetings, so we have no report. We do have a personnel committee meeting and a report, so Doug, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met at 5:45 PM, October 5th, 2011, in attendance were Council members Battelli, Peaning, and Chair Thomas, City Administrator Tucker, Assistant Administrator Zubin, and City Clerk Copeland. Forum was present to conduct business. Councilman Battelli moved to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 11th. Chair seconded those minutes, and they were passed unanimously. There were no citizens' comments. New business was a discussion of the appointments to the boards and commissions. Eight members of the boards of commissions have their terms expiring at the end of 2011. One member, Rick Linville of the ATAX Committee, was the only member with an expiring term that has stated he is not interested in returning. Councilman Battelli stated that the ATAX Commission has special business background requirements imposed by the state for its membership. This presents a special challenge to the committee. The administrators suggested several solutions to this challenge. The committee agreed to interview the five new candidates who turned in applications on Tuesday, October 11th, beginning at 6:00 PM. Under a miscellaneous business, there was none. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 9th, 2011, at 5:45. The safety winners, Recreation Department, Kerry Farrell; Police Department, Robert Nelson; Fire Department, I think it's Tuan Hayward; and Public Works, Bernard Gordine.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions for Personnel? Moving on. Real Properties, please, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real Property met on October 12th at 8:30 IM. All members of the committee were present. On, under old business, beach restoration, update that the city has not received from the Army Corps of Engineers permit, that is still being worked on. Basically, it's a, we're under a time constraint, because there is a show that because there is a shoal that is able to be worked on right now that we can be moving and use that sand to bring back the beach to where we needed to be. And so there's a time limit on how long that shoal is actually gonna be accessible before that would move into a place where it would not be fiscally possible for us to use that. So just to be aware of that, it's something that hopefully, Army Corps can get that information to the city pretty quickly so we can move forward. Under dredging, basically, that project is moving forward. We've basically set up a, we have executed a consent agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers for that and we are working with a, getting a RF out on it to, you know, get bids to do that work. And make note that we'll be moving the excess waste or the sand as we go to a 12-foot depth. We'll be moving that to Little Goat Island and so that. And the schedule is to begin right now, tentatively, for December 2012. We're working on the old building department as far as looking at ways of moving forward to that. And one of the challenges is there are some critical data lines and electrical lines in the old building and finding a vendor that would move those for us and we're waiting to get that, for someone to come in and give us a decent price to make that change. With that, the next meeting is scheduled for November 2nd at 8:30 AM.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is that we took action, I believe, last month for $30,000 in the event of dealing with the sand testing on the intercoastal side. Our engineers have talked their way with the Corps and the appropriate parties that we have to pay nothing. They have granted us authorization to do the dredging here without additional work, so that saved us $30,000 anticipated funds. That's, that was good news. We need some every now and then. So, any questions, Real Property? None heard? Let's move on. Standing committees, you have accommodations, tax, board of running deals, planning commissions in your package. Questions there? The only thing I would like to call your attention to is that in the planning commission, has set dates of November 9th, November 30th and December 14th to have open houses, forums to talk about parking in three different locales on the island. More information will be coming, hopefully shortly, November 9th is fairly around the corner. But that's a way to get people involved with the planning commission. Members of council are certainly going to be there. So it's a process that's still underway and those dates will be brought forward, so mark your calendars. Any other questions for those? None heard? We have disposed of the petition on 54th. Very well done. Only other miscellaneous business is relatively straightforward. We have a Halloween carnival that's coming up Monday, the 31st, 5 o'clock, 5 to 7. So put on your favorite Halloween. That's you too, Sandy. You're a Halloween face and show up and.
Norma Jean in the audience, so we didn't recognize.
We couldn't recognize Norma Jean if she was here. This carnival is attended by probably 500. I don't know, what'd you say? I can't count them all. 500 young folks that just love the time there, maybe because we have a jump castle, I don't know. But they have a great time and the staff has a great time putting it on. The Rec Center's been dressed up for this for weeks now, so please come and enjoy. Any other items to be brought before council?
Just one more thing, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, everybody, that next month, November, is now, is Movember and encourage all men to grow mustaches for men's health and awareness against cancer. So Sandy's got a jump on it, so next month, maybe you'll see me with a stash.
Stash? Not a full beard?
No, just a mustache.
Okay, all right.
Men's Health Awareness Month.
I'm not shaving my beard. Just want you to know.
Well, you never know where you get this stuff.
Careful what you ask for, bud.
You come here, it's amazing what you get to learn. All right, nothing heard? No executive session needed? Motion to adjourn? Motion and seconded.